Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals for the village of Tuckahoe for March the 10th, 2021. Nancy, please. Take your role.
Yes. Member Jackman.
Present.
Member Scalzo.
Present.
Member Palladino.
Present.
Member Garrity.
Present.
Member Fiore.
Present.
Member Martino.
Absent.
Okay, and Chairman Ringwald.
Present. First order of the business will be the approval of the minutes for the February the 10th, 2021 meeting. Does anyone have a motion to approve the minutes? Yeah, I'm motioning. I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Anybody?
Yeah. Chris, Chris motioned Scalzo seconded.
Got it.
Nancy, I guess pull the board.
Roll call. Yep. Member Jackman.
Prove.
For Scalzo.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
Prove.
Member Garrity.
In favor.
Member Fiore.
Favor.
And Chairman Ringwald.
In favor. So the first and second items on the list are 69 Main Street and 22 Underhill Street. I do not see the applicant. Does anybody know if they're coming?
Yep.
Yeah, he's here.
Yeah, everybody.
There we go.
Hi, everybody. This is Andrew Collingham. It's been a while, but good to see everybody again. Would you like me to start the presentation from here?
You're up.
Okay. So since our last meeting, I believe it was last year, we were able to get a topographic survey of 22 Underhill Street, which is the second parcel, a part of this project in which we are going to demolish an existing two-family house in order to provide parking for 69 Main Street, which is the principal building for this project. 60, 69 Main Street was a Masonic temple that is currently being used for Dr. Peter Zhang, who is occupying the first floor or the ground level for his practice. The proposed project, just to remind you, entails taking the existing auditorium double-height space and creating two floors out of it in an attempt to house two more doctors' offices in the building, which brings it to three doctors. As a result, three doctors at four parking spaces per doctor requires 12 parking spots. The current site, 69 Main Street, doesn't have any room for parking, which is where 22 Underhill comes into play. Again, demolishing the existing house and providing adequate parking. The other kind of premise with the parking is to combine the 22 Underhill Street lot with the Cameron Place lot, which currently the village owns. There are 14 parking spots in the Cameron Place lot, plus the additional 12 that are needed for the three doctors' offices, which totals 26 spots. We were able to design a contiguous parking lot, 22 Underhill and Cameron Place, to provide exactly 26 spots for the project. So the reason why we're here in front of the zoning board is because, one, the parking issue, which seems to be resolved by the 22 Underhill Street incorporation. The other aspect of the zoning board seeking the variance is the floor area ratio. Currently, the Masonic temple is 2.17 floor area ratio. The maximum for this district, this building, is 1.6. So in adding that third floor, we are proposing a FAR of 2.75. And again, the max required FAR is 1.6. Just wanted to bring to your attention that FAR only factors in the lot area of 69 Main Street. I did a quick calculation in factoring in 22 Underhill Street combined lot area by keeping the existing proposed floor area. When factoring in 22 Underhill, it results in a propose of 1.28 floor area ratio, which is under the, you know, the maximum allowed. So even though that's kind of going around the rules by including 22 Underhill Street in the floor area ratio calculation, we're actually under the requirement.
Andrew, but I'm sorry, let me interrupt you for a moment. Remember, you're not merging lots, right? You adding that just as an example, but the lot not being merged.
Correct.
I believe the board, I believe the board had specifically asked Andrew for that calculation because we thought that that, I don't mean to speak for everyone, but I believe, if I recall, we thought that that was a reasonable proxy for what the intention of the FAR calculation is. So we did specifically ask for that calculation.
Got it.
And I verified those numbers. They are correct. It would bring him at 14,245, and if they were combined, he'd be allowed 17,886.
Thank you, and thank you for that calculation.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, so that was one variance that we're seeking is the FAR relief. The other one, again, is the parking, because the parking that we're providing is not on the same lot as the principal structure. We're here at the zoning board. However, in speaking with the village board, we originally had gone back and forth about doing a possible land swap so that our parking lot could be contiguous with the temple building. That doesn't seem to be feasible, so the village board had recommended giving us an easement agreement. The owner, Peter Zhang of 69 Main Street and 22 Underhill, would pay for the site improvements, the parking lot, the drainage, lighting, curb cuts, and all those site improvements. As a result, we would get an easement from the village so that customers and patients could access the rear of the building. So in a way, they are contiguous, the spots are contiguous to the building, and that was kind of another proxy way of having parking on the same site. So they don't have to go to the street, they don't have to go to the sidewalk, they're all on, I guess, private property.
So that easement would allow you to utilize this rear, this entrance you were building in the initial application.
Yeah, legally connects the parking lot to the building.
That's great news.
Yeah. Gary, Gary, can you give a little background? Why would the board not do a swipe, a site swap? Why would they kick the road down in an awkward situation for the next 50 years instead of solving the problem today?
I think when we spoke to Andrew, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, it's, it's, a land swap would have to be, you know, apples for apples, but, and I think there was a difference here. There, you know, our lot might be bigger, their lot might be smaller, then you have to pay for appraisals, see which one, who's going to compensate who, and it was just getting
Too messy.
Too messy, and I think that's what we had spoke to with Andrew. Andrew, did you speak with the village board or with David about?
Mr. Burke, yeah.
Mr. Burke about maintaining the, I'm sorry, Dave.
50 years of easements or 100 years of easements is less, is less painful than like actually figuring it out and doing it right today? That's what the board decided, or that's?
Well, no, I don't think it was the board deciding. I think it was, you know, applicant getting appraisals and trying to come up with a proposal to the board. We weren't presented with anything saying, hey, this is what our land costs, this is what yours is, this is what we proposed to do. But I don't know if they want to go down that road. Andrew, is that correct? Was that?
Yeah, I believe David Burke had spoken to the board, and this was their feeling that the easement agreement would be less complicated and easier to execute. But I believe that we need to obtain zoning board approval before we can officially move on and develop that easement agreement. So that's kind of where we are now.
So because they don't want to consider a land swap, we have to consider an easement that would be permanent. Is that what you're saying?
I believe so. Yep.
Oh, okay.
Keep in mind that the site improvements would be paid for by the owner of 69 Main Street. So the village would make out pretty well with the whole improvements to the parking lot. Not to mention that they would keep their existing 14 spots. And then currently, of those 14 spots, Dr. Peter Zhang rents or leases four of those spots. And because the new parking lot would give him all the spots that he needs for his building, those four spots would then go back to the village, and I believe it's their lottery system or however they award those spots to the next person on the list.
Hey, Gary, I brought to, just to make everybody aware, but I brought the bill's attention, and Bill knows about it too. We want to make sure, and I think that everybody wants to make sure this lot is merged technically, not technically merged, some kind of deed restriction on that lot, that it would be coincided with the building so that the client can't sell that lot off at a later time, and then we're stuck with a building with no parking again. So somehow or another, you need to figure out how we do a deed restriction on this lot, I would assume, to tie it into this guy's building. So if these variances are granted, they would stay that way, and it would stay that lot with that building, coincide, almost merging it together in some sense.
Yeah, Bill, can we do that for the CO?
No. Bill has got to stay with the parking lot.
No, what we, what we have to do is it has to be a deed restriction. Otherwise, it could get lost in the paperwork in the property folders 50 years down the road.
Correct. Not only that, Gary, you know, it's, you can tie it into a CO, but what happens if the guy comes in there only to look at that lot folder, and it just gets messy. It would need to be done on a count.
The village wouldn't be part of, I could look at a deed, I can't get involved in a transfer of a deed of that property, but they could show me what they propose.
No, no, I'm not saying they don't, but we would have to make it a condition that somehow or another he does a deed restriction that would basically say tying these two lots together.
So we could make part of our approval be requirement that he show proof that the deed restriction has been taken place by the parties involved.
Correct.
Even though the village itself can't physically do it, he can and shows us that proof.
Yeah, subject to this, we won't issue a CO without it, because otherwise.
Which considering we're going to use his FAR, you know, we're giving him this FAR calculation, that is kind of what he's doing.
That's exactly the reason why I'm bringing it to your attention.
I think that's, that makes sense.
Thank God, that's, thank God, that's nice and simple. I'm very, I'm very pleased that, you know, that's simple.
Can't sense any bitterness there, David.
Yeah, because, I mean, I wish people would do their jobs.
So if I could, Tom, is that, if I could talk for, yeah, I'm a little confused, like, where are we picking up on this? I know we're talking about the parking, this all sounds very reasonable. Are we looking to like get this moving, get this approved quickly? Because I know the building, we still kind of need to see final plans, because what we initially saw back last year was, I believe, Andrew, some very kind of rough, just what you kind of, you know, conceptualize it would look like, but those weren't close to final, if I recall.
Yeah, there was some back and forth about the specific rooms and the quantity of rooms and what they would be used for. So we did that little study with, with Dr. Zhang to understand or better, better understand the number of rooms and the different procedures and, and different equipment that's required for those procedures. And we basically had just copied and pasted his, his model.
Right.
For his two and three, just to provide some sort of diagram and how the building would be used.
But I'm assuming we can't approve this bill until we get final diagrams, right?
Well, for now, I believe the rooms are the way that he wants them, but we're not going to take it to like a construction documents level until we, we better understand that this project's going to move forward.
I would just be, you know, let's be honest, I would be concerned about it. Suddenly, there's twice as many rooms in the final construction document. So I don't know how we get that commitment that it's going to be, you know, a similar room count. Obviously, it doesn't have to be exactly the same, but.
Well, Nate, Nate, the two things you're locking them into is a special permit for the parking, and the FAR variance is going to limit him to his floor area.
Well, what I'm saying, Bill, is I don't want these nice little offices to turn into super tiny doctors' offices now with, you know, twice as many patients as, in my concern.
So let me ask a question, Andrew. If for some reason we can't get approval for the parking, are you going to drop the entire project? I mean, are these two separate, or is one contingent on the other?
No, this is entirely contingent on each other. You know, he bought that house for the parking.
So we got to resolve the parking first. If we get that resolved, then we can move forward to the building, right?
Yeah, agreed, agreed.
Tom, the one thing I didn't want to forget from the last year, though, is I remember we, I don't remember if it was you, or we had some questions about the use of the basement.
Yes.
Because I don't think we were concerned, yeah, I don't think we were super concerned about the three floors, given the amount of parking he was building. I think it was whether or not that we were going to allow that basement to be, you know, restricted to use of some sort, or, you know, we don't want offices showing up in there for a fourth doctor.
Agree, but, you know, Gary, in my opinion, until we can get this parking issue resolved, I don't see the point in going any further with the, with the temple, the medical facility.
Right.
Tom, Andrew, I have a comment about the parking area on 22 Underhill. And I think we discussed that, I believe it was discussed right in our first meetings. If you look at the Google Street View right now, and if you see the amount of parking area, and that's more of a planning issue than a zoning, but one of the things, you probably introduced the idea of demolishing 22 Underhill because of our code and the requirement of parking spaces per doctor. Is that correct, Andrew? That's how you got to the 26 that you referred to in the beginning of the meeting?
Yeah, we actually had a few from the previous schematic parking lot layout. But once we had the official survey in hand, it was a brand-new survey, and we laid out all the parking spaces, nine feet by 20 feet, proper two-lane driveway. We were able to get 26, and that was a number that we were comfortable with, because that was the minimum that we need.
I believe we, we discussed in detail last year that his, his client was going to be required to put in plantings, which I believe were actually reflected in drawings we received. There would be plantings shielding the parking from the street and providing more of a pleasing street view, because, you know, we were concerned about just endless parking on that street. So I think there was already specific discussions, mitigation that took place.
One of the things that I'm seeing here, and that's why I think it's important to share with the board and everybody. If you look at this view, or even though our code says this is permitted in this area to have a use as a parking space or parking garage, we don't have a limitation in percentage, which means if we want to do the entire area a parking space, we find with that per code. But that's when the board comes into place to make a suggestion. If you look at that street right now, the walkability of the village may be at risk, because all we're going to do on camera, with the exception of the church, and the building in the corner will be parking. The parkings right now are all horizontal. We're not having a parking garage with many floors. So that means every single building that we required, like, for example, this building, 26 spots, we require demolition, or we require all of that demand, and that might be dangerous later on for the town, for the walkability and seeing architectural elements all around. So that's the point, I think.
Yeah, again, I think we discussed this, Carolina, specifically last year, we went through this, because you had raised the exact same concern, and I believe the board felt at the time that, you know, there is already.
Mention last year was about the limitation in percentage of the uses, and that can be dangerous.
Well, I think we specifically referred to the walkability and, and what, you know, how to look in that area. I think the feeling was that we're already talking about an existing parking lot. The structure that we're losing is a rather unremarkable two-family home. So it wasn't, you know, we're not tearing down a park, so it wasn't felt like we were losing a lot.
It might not be remarkable, but it's still an architectural element with a 3D volumetric space, which makes a big difference.
Yeah, and I guess that, you know, that'll be a decision that, you know, we have to take in, that'll be something we have to take in consideration with our decision.
Nathan, Nathan, the other thing to remember is that, that.
It's more the planning board's decision on.
You're right, Tom, it is for the planning board, but also, the two houses that are there are non-conforming. They should not be in this district.
Oh. I've always found it odd that there are just two random houses on that block. Hey, Andrew, just, I know last time we spoke with David, you guys, your applicant was going to get an attorney so they can talk to me about, you know, logistics and stuff like that. I know we're talking conceptually, and that's fine, but ultimately, I think he's going to need to get somebody to, you know, talk about these deeds and stuff like that. Yeah. So, so Tom, and maybe Gary, how do we move forward then? Do we just, it sounds, is everybody kind of okay with this movement towards, with a deed restriction, we allow the vote on the lot to go ahead? I mean, what exactly do we do now? Yeah, I think if you guys are conceptually okay with it, I think we need a better proposal to get to the board, to the village board, of exactly what's, what they're asking of us, of the easement and stuff. What's that going to entail? Who's going to maintain this? What's the liability? And then we can, we can go from there. We can work out the details. If you guys conceptually are okay with it. So doesn't, so doesn't that have to happen first before we start talking about approvals? I would think so. I would think we, you know, if you guys are inclined to say, hey, listen, we like this, essentially, this is what it is. I think the applicant goes, gets an attorney, then presents it. Okay. Gets us something that we can present to the village board, and then I could, I could counsel the village board, and, you know, hey, this is, this is okay, this is not okay. I, I know David has a, you know, conceptual, you know, he doesn't find this pleasant as easement, but if we just have to accept that that's the way it is, David, is, you know, is everyone else okay with this, kind of moving forward down this road? I am personally.
I am.
Yeah, okay. As a matter of clarify, as a matter of clarification, what specific variances are they going to ask us for? Or are they asking us for now?
One is the FAR. The maximum allowed is 1.6, and we're asking for 2.75.
I think he means on the parking lot.
Oh, on the parking? The issue with the parking is that it's not on the same lot as the principal structure.
The, the thing with the parking lot is just required by special permit, that's all.
So it's just, yeah, so John, it's just a special permit.
That's correct. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Really, Bill? I thought the other issue was like Andrew said, that it wasn't, you know, contiguous with the.
I think that's for the building.
That's for, that's a planning board issue, not a zoning board issue.
Good.
All right. Does anyone have an issue if we, if we give them the go-ahead to start talking about the village more legally, David?
So the only issue is FAR, okay?
No, for the lot, for the lot, John.
Just the lot.
Just the lot.
Just a lot.
Thing is, special use.
And that's what I would require a special use for that.
Yeah.
Because as Andrew said, if they don't get the lot approval, they may not go forward with the, with the medical facility. Gary, this is, I know, but we might have a whole new board come next month.
Right.
What, are they going to fire all of us?
There's an election coming up.
Are you guys, yeah.
Oh, I thought they were firing us.
You guys are stuck.
No, you're stuck. I'm quitting.
No, there's an election, yeah.
Yeah, Andrew, you need to be aware of that too. There's a possibility they could change, they could change their opinion, or?
Correct. Who knows? Yeah, Andrew, I would, I would wait, you know, after the elections, and then, you know.
The May is definitely going to be different, so.
Yeah.
But I mean, as a planning board, can't we provide the recommendation that we believe this is a prudent path to go down? Yeah, you're the zoning board, but yeah, absolutely. Zoning board, thank you, yeah. Convey that to them and, you know, have them watch this meeting.
So what I would say, I would say, you know, the Masonic, the redevelopment of the Masonic temple is important for all of Tuckahoe, for the village of Tuckahoe, for Main Street. We want that building beautified, we want it usable. It needs parking in order to be usable. And the idea of having park, having an entrance in the back away from Main Street is beneficial to everyone. Now, that building should last 50 or 100 years, so why don't we just fix the problem now? Do the land swap and get it done. That way, everything's clean. And this idea of kicking the can with, you know, Scotch tape and easements and deed restrictions, just because some people don't want to do some work today. I mean, it's just, doesn't seem proper. You know, but I do want the building redeveloped. I do like the fact that this applicant is willing to spend money and do what's proper by getting the right amount of parking, so I do appreciate that. And, you know, I think we'll do what, I will be supportive with what's necessary, but I hope our Board of Trustees is supportive of doing what's right for the village as well. And the village manager.
All right, so, I mean, Tom, I think, you know, we just provide the recommendation that we think that they need to get this, you know, sorted out, whether it's the old board or the new board.
Yeah, I don't disagree, but, you know, I'm pretty sure they're going to go along with what Mr. Burke suggests, and if Mr. Burke is unwilling to go through the headache that David, you know, brought up, then, you know, this is the next best thing. I'm not happy with it either. I think they, I agree with the members, member Scalzo, that they should correct it. But if they're not willing to correct it, then we have to go to Plan B. B is the easements and the deed restrictions.
But if they're now, if they're actively not willing to correct it, then how can we overrule them?
We can't.
Yeah.
Oh, so we should not approve it then, if they're not willing to actively correct?
We could turn them down then.
In a more general sense, we want parking. I'm not saying, David, Mr. Burke didn't actually say, hey, it's too much work, I don't want to do this, or whatever. No one on the board said that. But we have to be presented with something where we can say, hey, these are the appraisals on the, on these properties. This is what we're getting, this is what we're giving up, and that's a lot of money. And I think when we spoke to the applicant about it, that might have been an issue.
Appraisals are a lot of money?
Something like this, it could be. But that's, that's not up to me. That's not, the village isn't going to pay for it.
That, that's up to the village, that's up to the village board.
Well, it's not our money. I don't think the village is going to pay for either the. No, it's the applicant, is what you're saying, yeah. Right. If the applicant doesn't want to go down this road and wants to stick with an easement, that's up to them.
You guys, also, just so everybody's aware, it might not be as easy as you guys think, because when it's public property, sometimes it needs to go to auction or highest spin. So it's not as easy as they could just swapping. Somebody come, somebody could legally come in and say, look, I'm going to buy it for X.
Right. And I don't necessarily. We got to look into, but it was. And I might be.
I mean, I'm in a domain, would suggest not.
I was told we had to go to auction as well. I forgot about that.
I mean, I'm kind of, I don't mind the easement. My driveway is an easement, so for me, it's not, it doesn't bother me that much, but I understand Member Scalzo's point.
Yeah, most of us won't be here in 50 years, so don't worry about it.
So I think there's a lot of work that has to be done before we have to make any sort of decisions.
But the, the idea is, Gary, you know, let's recommend that they start this, this. Conceptually, you guys are okay with that. I'll pass that along to the village board. Then hopefully, the village board will get something we can take a look at, concrete, and say, this is what, you know, this is what this applicant's willing to do. Right. I just, there's nothing for us to rule on here.
Can we, can we get a determination from Mr. Burke on the route, whether it's land swap or easement? And maybe why, and just so that we can pick a route, and then we can hire our attorney to develop some of the groundwork to move towards either the land swap or the easement? I just don't want to spin wheels in both directions if, if one's not over the other.
Yeah, I think the point is that there was the election, you know, Mr. Burke has bosses, you know, he works for the board. And the board is going to change. The board today is not going to be the board in two weeks or three weeks from now.
Okay.
So we will be able to give you that answer for, you know, the next month. But the point is, Gary, he is owed an answer by David Burke's that we can solidify. Yeah, so I think that's all he's asking for, is in three, four weeks. Right. David provides him which path to go down, so we actually have something to vote on. Right? Sure. Okay.
Maybe we can invite David to the next zoning board meeting as a guest appearance.
Nah, he stays away from the boards. He stays in the shadows.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense. We can wait a little bit and get some more clarity on that.
But I assume the ball is in our court now, Gary, not Andrew's. Right? Yeah, in a way, or maybe Andrew should, I'll talk to Mr. Burke and see if we can, well, it's a public, it's maybe take him, get, bring him to a work session of the village board. No, I just want to, who's responsible party right now? It's David and you, right? To reach out to Andrew, yeah, and I. To reach out to Andrew, yeah, and I I think ultimately it would be to invite him to a work session, talk about this.
Okay.
Okay, very good. I think we're done with this, right, Gary? There's no point in opening or asking for comment from the public, cause we really. Right now.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Andrew, thanks for your time.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thanks.
We do want that building occupied, so.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Good, thanks, everybody.
Good, thank you. Alright, thanks, everybody. Next up is eighty eighth Maple Avenue. The applicant here? Unmute yourself and state your name for the record, please.
Um, I'm Ted Demore. I'm representing the applicant. Uh Kara Cronin and her husband Quinn is also here on in the Zoom meeting.
Okay, has anything changed since the last meeting?
Uh, yes, as as a matter of fact, uh during the work session, I learned uh I I was a little bit taken by surprise because of the drawings, um when first submitted um had a number of dimensions on them and uh there's a uh section of your code that says six foot walls are not permitted unless uh under the zoning and um uh unfortunately, I missed the uh provision in your zoning code and I didn't have it on my chart and Bill didn't notice the dimensions on the drawing and uh somehow it got missed. And uh if I, if you'd like, I could share the screen with the public, but um to show you what we plan to do, but during the work session, I thought that possibly we could tier the wall in such a way that no section of it will be more than six feet. But then uh one of your members said if there's a fence on top of the wall, the fence gets included and you have to measure from the top of the fence down to the bottom of the wall. And um our idea is to uh and if I showed the rendering, you would see, I have a I have a slope retaining wall that follows the direction of the stairway and it's only a foot above the stair, but I have a two foot railing on top of that.
Sorry, go ahead, show the uh show the rendering.
Alright, let me share my screen. Right, um. Between the bottom of the stair and the top of the stair, I've got about thirteen feet. The driveway slopes up um such that the wall from this point, the uh to the top of the driveway and the top of this wall is is eight feet. Um, this section of wall, if I'm gonna count the wall height from the top of the railing, because that's the way your zoning says, al- almost all of my wall is more than six feet higher than the driveway.
No, Edward, Edward, you can have that two foot railing on there on the wall.
I need to have it.
You, you can have it. It's for protection. It's for protection and for a handrail.
Um.
So it's not part of, it's not counted in in the footage then?
No.
You want it counted in the footage?
No.
Alright, in that case, um if that's not gonna be counted in the footage, then um great, I misunderstood when uh one of your members uh said that it would be counted.
No, if you were, if Edward, if you were building a wall, then putting a fence on top of it and your uh your property was not the higher portion of the property where the wall was needed, then it would count. So you couldn't put a a a wall on your property two or three feet high and then put a four foot fence on top of it and create a barrier that's seven, eight feet high.
I got you. Alright, then um if that's the case, then we can, then um the variances I need are the variance to um have this deck, which instead of being twenty five foot setback from the street, it's twenty foot setback. And we have um a parking space for a car in the required front yard setback. And those are my variances and um I went over most of the reasons uh for them at our last meeting. And we are um uh victims of the topography of Toccoho. We have a house that's on the high side of the street and you can tell by um these retaining walls, we just can't get a car into the backyard. And the lot's a little narrow to get a car back there anyway. And that that's um for the reasons that I stated last month, um there's a uniqueness to the site. Uh, it doesn't disturb the neighborhood. It gets one of the cars off the street that currently takes up one of the parking spaces. Um, we made an application with DPW and I have a copy of it here. The DPW um uh chief signed off on the curb cut and he was uh gonna talk to the police department and Bill about it. I don't know which signatures he was gonna get first, but um I have one third of the signatures for widening the driveway. There's no parking on this side of the street, so um it's a win-win for the neighborhood, because my client's uh willing to spend um thousands of dollars to create a parking space on her uh property. And create another parking space for somebody else in the neighborhood to park in.
So wait, I have a question. The um the wall on the right going all the way underneath the deck? Right up there.
This one.
Yes, isn't there, where you have your cursor now, isn't that eight feet? And you said you would drop it to six feet and put a couple of posts?
On top of it? This wall here, um we're gonna widen this planter just a little bit, because I can get this wall down to about seven. It needs to reach the bottom of the deck. I'm just a victim of topography here. I uh so I'll put a couple of posts under this deck and drop this wall down uh a foot or a foot and a half. And then anything I need to make up, I'll make it up at the bottom, so it will be tiered and not be more than six feet tall.
I just wanted to be clear, otherwise you'd have to come back for another variance if you wanna leave it at the eight feet.
Um, it's gonna take me probably more than two months to do that and notifying everybody all over again. I think we can make this happen. Um, uh, Bill explaining the business about about the railing makes it all happen, oh makes it all possible to make this, to make us.
Alright, just wanna make sure that's understood.
Yep.
My my other last question is the the wall on the left. I I did a site visit and that's in disrepair. You would mention that you would repair that wall. There's a major crack in it.
Okay, we'll get it fixed. The um property is about five and a half feet from this wall to this wall is our property line. Um, if the, if it's on our property, we'll fix it. If it's on somebody else's property, we can't fix it.
No, it's on the, it's on the inside of the driveway. It's really where the curved part of the, you were just pointing.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, that's um, are there any other questions about the project?
That's it? No members have a question?
No.
Okay, I just wanna remind everybody that the public hearing is still open on this. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak regarding eighty eighth Maple Avenue enlarging a driveway? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Does any member have a resolution in the form of a motion that they would like to present regarding eighty eighth Maple Avenue?
Uh, yes, Chairman Ringwald, I have a resolution in the form of a motion.
Thank you.
Area variance resolution. The application for area variances requested by Quinn and Kara Cronin, whose address is eighty eighth Maple Avenue, Toccoho, New York, section forty four, block eight, lot thirty eight, for relief from the following sections of the zoning code. Four dash two dot four dot one front yard and five dash one dot two off-street parking. Secra resolution. Based on this application as submitted, the zoning board of appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of Secra and its implementing regulations. Two, the zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application. Three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please call the board.
Okay, there you go. Member Jackman.
Not in favor.
I'm sorry?
Not in favor.
Member Scalzo.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Garrity.
Not in favor.
Member Fury.
I'm out of this one. So you already got five.
Sorry, sorry. And Chairman Ringwald.
In favor.
Okay.
Continuing. The applicants reside at eighty eighth Maple Avenue in Toccoho and are seeking to expand their driveway to create an additional parking space in the front yard. The applicant's property is unique in several ways. First, the lot is only thirty seven and a half feet wide, which is much narrower than the standard lot found in the village. Second, the property is on the side of a hill with the house located far above street level and the front of the property contains a large retaining wall at the sidewalk line and front yard. Third, a very narrow driveway has been carved out of the hill and was clearly built at a time when vehicles were smaller, which renders the driveway virtually unusable as car, as car doors cannot be easily opened. Further, the driveway retaining wall and stairway from the sidewalk to the house are aging and need to repair, so the applicants need to act soon. The retaining wall at the sidewalk is large and unsightly, rising more than five feet from the ground. For neighbors walking along the sidewalk or driving in their car, the wall creates a canyon effect on the street and overall cramped feeling. Maple Avenue is narrow with parking allowed only on one side of the street, creating a parking shortage and spaces are difficult to find. The applicant's property is located on the side of the street where parking is prohibited. Thus, the additional curb cut that would be needed to add the space for the applicant will not take away a space of an on-street parking. The applicant's proposed solution of eliminating the retaining wall, removing excess dirt to bring the front yard to street level and expanding the driveway is a creative solution that creates more open space, beautifies the property and improves the neighborhood. Based on the uniqueness of the property and the beneficial aspect of the proposed solution, the board finds that the conditions of the five-prong test have been met and the application for the area variance is granted. The granting of the variances herein is granted on the condition that work under such variance be commenced and diligently prosecuted within one year of the granting thereof, then which such variance shall become null and void.
Thank you. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please call the board.
Yes, Member Jackman.
Not in favor.
Member Scalzo.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Garrity.
Before I cast my vote, I have a statement on this. This is the third similar application regarding the same issue that this board has reviewed recently. If we vote in favor of this application, it will be the third such variance granted by this board. Result of that is the board creating a precedent that will eventually undermine the village code. When another applicant comes before this board seeking the same relief that for us today, this board denies them with good cause. Eventually, someone will file an Article seventy eight proceeding. When a judge sees how many similar variances have been granted, that denial will be overturned as being arbitrary. As the only attorney on the zoning board of appeals, I find that prospect unacceptable. Uh, the zoning code as written is designed to maximize green space and limit impervious surfaces. This application and all similar applications seek a reduction of green space. On the other hand, there is a significant number of residents who own properties built prior to the modern zoning code that have tight walled and driveways that are not designed to fit large modern vehicles. If we, as a village, want to establish a right to expand these antiquated driveways at the expense of green space, that should be addressed by the village board of trustees. It's my recommendation that instead of the zoning board addressing this issue applicant by applicant, pretending that every one of these identical situations is somehow unique, the board of trustees should reexamine the section of the zoning code. My recommendation is strictly for the board of trustees to reexamine this section of the zoning code and does not suggest a specific determination. Accordingly, I vote no and recommend that this issue be addressed with the board of trustees.
Got it. And Chairman Ringwald.
In favor. Congratulations.
I would just like to um uh add a couple thoughts on this. Um, so I appreciate the um intent and the votes of um on my fellow members who voted against it. I will say, I was a little disappointed in the votes to vote no on the environmental regulations, the Secra resolution, cause never has anyone ever uh brought up the idea that this could have an environmental impact. Um, so the idea of voting no on the Secra resolution is odd. Second, um but that's neither here nor there. On the actual application, from what I understand, we are supposed to consider a five-pronged test on whether the benefits can be achieved, on whether there's an undesirable change in the neighborhood, whether the request is substantial, whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects and whether the alleged difficulty is self-created. There is no process, there's no uh for us to consider uh precedent. In fact, that's, you know, that's essentially um going against the applicant because of some future applicant. What we're supposed to do is look at the unique features of every single property and decide with that property as to whether it's appropriate or not. We can't um, you know, height, come up with hypothetical reasons to maybe or maybe not vote yes or no based on something that may or may not happen in the future. In fact, I think suggesting that we vote based on future hypotheticals puts us to have more risk for Article seventy eights and more risk for um uh legislation and litigation against us.
I would like to express my concurrence with the members concerned regarding precedent. And also note that, in my opinion, the application issues were self-created um due to the need for two driveways and not one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, twenty five Main Street, reduce number of parking spaces required. The applicant present, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Leonard Brandis, representing Peter Bottucci and twenty five Main Streets.
Okay, so um just so the public knows, during the work session, we talked back and forth whether or not to grant this full um request of reducing the number of spaces by, what is that, six, I believe? And the concern that once things get back to quote-unquote normal, uh the need for those spots may arise again, so we were trying to come up with something reasonable um that both the applicant and we as a board could could live with as far as giving you some relief from this um requirement that twenty one parking spaces. So correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking to go from twenty one to fifteen, correct?
Correct, that is correct.
And cr- the current uh timeframe for parking was the November to November, but I understand it's been changed from March to March now by the village board?
That is correct, um, Mr. Chair.
Okay, alright. I also understand that your applicant has not paid for the spaces from November to date. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Alright.
But I believe there has been a moratorium uh on those payments by the town of Board of Trustees.
So the unpaid time would be March first through now.
Okay, oh, okay. Alright, is any member want to make a proposal as far as granting or not granting the um relief from the parking?
Well, I I think the proposal is um that we talked about in the work session would be to grant the relief of five parking spots. Uh, redu- reduce the amount of parking necessary for this property by five spots for the period of one year until March first of twenty twenty two. At which point um they would have to go back to the whole number of spots unless they came back before the board and and we reconsidered.
Okay, I agree with that. Anybody disagree?
Well, is that, is that, let let's make that into a motion, Mr. Chair?
Well, is that, is that, let's make that into a motion, Mr. Chair? Would that be a motion?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to talk it through and see if anybody had any different opinions first before making a motion. I agree with you. We should make a motion, but-
And it's, just to be clarified, is it six spaces or five spaces, Mr. Brandis? I'm gonna go back to my drawing for a second, if that's okay.
That was five.
I believe it was five on the board there. So let me just- So 21 to 16? I just want to be crystal clear. Yeah. Understood. We're looking to take out, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. We're looking to take out one, two, three, four, five, six spaces over here.
Six? Okay.
Six spaces. We have a total of 21. These 15 are part of Metro North that we have leased for the 100-year term that we have for the building. And these are the additional spaces that the town has required us to have.
And, Mr. Williams, would those be turned into metered spaces or would those be turned into full-time spaces? I guess right now they're, they're annual leases. Is that correct?
Right now, they're permit only.
Permit only. Okay. And I guess the board, the board of trustees, they could turn those into metered spaces if they wanted instead of having them be permitted. That would be their purview, I assume.
Yes. Lenny, you're giving up prime spots there looking at the site plan.
So a lot of people seem to be using them when we don't, since they've been empty all these years. So people do take advantage of those spaces.
I want to clarify that that's for the applicant. You know, the applicant is more than welcome to call a tow truck.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
When you say permitted spaces, Bill, is that the March to March or is that something different?
No, if they're permitted, they're March to March.
Thank you.
And we would be willing to come back next March to see how we are with the parking spaces. If we do need more spaces, we will pay for more spaces at that time.
Lenny, may I suggest coming back next February, just a month ahead?
Obviously.
Yeah.
Lenny never comes early. Come on.
Do we open the public hearing on this?
It's, it was open. Yeah. Do we need to, Gary, make a whole new?
Well, i- it's open, Mr. Chair. So like you would in the other application, just see if there's anyone from the public that wants to speak. If not, close it up and then somebody can make a motion.
Yeah, I, it's still scratching my head why this is in front of us, not the planning board. But since the public, I'll make, remind everyone that the public hearing is still open on 25 Main Street, if I remember correctly. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment regarding reducing the number of parking spaces for 25 Main Street? Okay, seeing none. Gary, should I leave the public hearing open? Because we're going to make a proposal that we agree to-
Are you inclined to vote on it tonight? Somebody can make a motion like Member Scalzo just did, in the form of a motion, and you can vote on it. You don't need a formal resolution. We could make it part of the record.
I would say Member Scalzo makes his formal motion that he just mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah. I make, I make, I make a formal motion to reduce the number of permitted spots from 21 to 16 for the year of March 1st, 2021 through February 28th, 2022, at which point it will revert back to 21 spots necessary.
21 to 15.
21 to 15. Yes. I accept your correction.
We don't need a written resolution by the attorney with regard to this?
Gary?
Gary, at the minimum, they gotta do SECRE on this.
You have to do SECRE on this? Is this an area variant?
It's a variant, yes.
I can read a SECRE resolution.
That's all you need.
In the form of a motion, SECRE resolution.
All right. You made, you made the motion.
Let's have to close the public hearing first.
Gary?
Would it hurt to do this next month? Okay, that we'd have everything formalized?
Wouldn't it be best to have it done since it's March and the payment starts in March?
I would agree with that. But I can't hear Gary any longer. Gary, did you get cut off?
Yes.
Yeah, you're back. Go ahead.
So we need to close the public hearing first. Then Member Scalzo will read his SECRE resolution he's got in front of him and he'll say his verbal-
Right. Okay. All right. So seeing no one from the public wants to comment on this, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing for 25 Main Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Does any member have a resolution in the form of a motion they'd like to present for 25 Main Street?
I have a resolution, Chairman. I have a resolution in the form of a motion to, for 25 Main Street to reduce the number of parking spots from 21 to 15 for the dates of March 1st, 2021 through February 28th, 2022, at which point the number of spots will revert to 21.
Thank you.
I will now read a SECRE resolution.
All right. Hold on.
Based, based on this application as submitted, the zoning board of appeals-
All right, Gary, can you hear it?
Gary, you're, you're on mute, Bill. You're on unmuted, Bill. Thank you.
I propose a resolution in the form of a motion for 25 Main Street to reduce the number of parking spots from 21 to 15 for the date of March 1st, 2021 through February 28th, 2022, at which point it will revert to needing the full 21 spots. I have a SECRE resolution. Based on this application as submitted, the zoning board of appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SECRE and its implementing regulations. Two, the zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application. Three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Thank you. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please call the board.
Who seconded it?
Ted Garrity.
Gary, okay.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Chris. I don't know why, but-
Yes. Okay, Member Jackman?
In favor.
Member Palladino?
In favor.
For Garrity?
Favor.
And Chairman Ringwald?
In favor. Okay. So Gary will write that up and get it to me and we'll sign that.
Do we need, and do we need a second vote for this, Gary?
Yeah, for your official motion now.
For the official motion, we've had a lot of discussion on, on the necessity of this. This is a temporary reduction in the number of spots largely given because of the coronavirus pandemic that we've seen and the lack of traffic going into the city off of Metro North, of course. That's the reason that it is temporary and why we will revisit this in another year to see how traffic patterns have changed.
We have to vote on this motion as well, Gary?
Yes.
Yeah. So the, the motion on the table is to reduce it from 21 spaces to 15.
Okay.
Second.
Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Garrity? Okay, Member Jackman?
In favor.
Member Scalzo?
In favor.
Member Palladino?
In favor.
For Garrity?
Favor.
And Chairman Ringwald?
In favor. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate all your help.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you, Lenny.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Is there any further business? If not, I'll make a motion to close this meeting from March 10th, 2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.